The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Con. Eighteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Darius T. Miller from Morningstar Missionary Baptist Church in East St. Louis. Pastor Miller is a close friend and a pastor to Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
I want to thank the esteemed President of this body, Mr. Lewis Reed, for the genuine courtesy he's shown to me today. Do you want to acknowledge him and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard for inviting me? If you would bow your head with me in a short word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for this day. A day that we did not initiate, a day who's in we do not know. So we stand in awe of who you are. We stand in awe of your mightiness and your power. Lord, we pray right now for courage for this body, Lord, as they talk about, discuss, debate the issues affecting those of this great city and region. We pray that you give them insight and clarity. You give them conviction of conscience. Lord, we pray also that you give them compassion on those who are weak, those who are wanting, those who stand in need, those who are hurting, those who are sick, those who are sad. I then pray a special prayer of covering for them, their families, their children, their grandchildren, that you would meet every one of their needs according to your riches and glory, that you would show yourself to be who you are in their lives, for their good, for your glory. It's in Christ's name that I pray. Amen.
Join me in a round of applause for Pastor Miller. Thank you. That was a great opening prayer, and I appreciate it. We'll dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to have as my special guest Alpha Kappa Alpha Gamma Omega Chapter up in the balcony. They are here as promised a week later to make sure that we represent and present their resolution on early voting. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth.
And thank you, Honored Board. Ms. Person, who is one of the eighteenth Ward residents, I would just like to have as a guest.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. We are here on June 21st. It is on this day in 1975, the movie Jaws was released. In 1980, The Blues Brothers were released. And this being the 21st, it is the summer solstice, the longest day of the year, which seems like every Friday is the longest day of the year down here. Thank you.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, June 14, 2019.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I move for approval of minutes for June 14, 2019.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion. Second, second by Alderman from the sixteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Reported city officials.
Reported city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed into Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Paul Vila, a hotel representative of South of Persian, replacing David Colash, whose unexpired term ends on July 1, 2020. The appointment of Mr. Cal Bozenin, a property owner of South of Persian, replacing Peter Casal, whose unexpired term ends on July 1, 2020. The reappointment of Mr. Derek Gamblin, a restaurant business owner, South of Persian, whose term will expire July 1, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Kenneth Fowler, a retail business owner, North of Persian, whose term would expire July 1, 2022. I respectfully request your appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
I move that we approve the appointments to the Central West End Community Improvement District.
Move by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Washington Place Special Business District. The reappointment of Mr. Chester Hines, a property owner who resides in the twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. Ivan Schrader, a property owner who resides in the twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31, 2022. The reappointment of Ms. Janet Meyer, a property owner who resides in the twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31, 2019. The reappointment of Ms. Vanessa Wayne Hutchinson, a property owner who resides in the twenty-eighth Ward and whose term would expire December 31, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. William Latt, who resides in the twenty-eighth Ward and whose term will expire on December 31, 2020. I respectfully request your appointments of the approval of these appointments.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, you recognize on Mayor's appointments to the Washington Place Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we approve the Mayor's appointments to the Washington Place Special Business District.
Move by Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth, entertain a second on the second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Clean Energy Development Board, PACE. The reappointment of Ms. Emily Andrews, who resides in the twelfth Ward and whose term will expire on May 11, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Patrick Justice, who resides in the eighth Ward and whose term will expire May 11, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Otis Williams, who resides in the seventh Ward, whose term will expire on May 11, 2022. I respectfully request your approval of the reappointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz and Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Clean Energy Development Board, PACE.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to approve the Mayor's appointments.
Move by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, and Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That is the extent of reported city officials.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills? Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize.
I'd like to take Board Bills Number 31, Committee Substitute, and Number 35 off the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Would you like them on the consent calendar or the regular perfection calendar?
I suspect they ought to probably be on the regular.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Move Board Bills 31, Committee Substitute, and 35 to the tail end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth.
Members of the Board, I would like to move Board Bill 21 to the third reading consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 21 on the third reading consent calendar, at the tail end of the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through 10. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. At the bequest of the Alderwoman from the sixth, I make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing Board Bill 79 and Resolution 78.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixteenth, and seconded by the Alderman from the seventh, and Alderman from the thirteenth. We suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills 79 and Resolution Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Con. Twenty-one aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the sixteenth, introduce Board Bill 79 and Resolution 78. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 79 at the tail end of the first reading calendar and Board Bill and Resolution 78 at the tail end of the first reading resolutions calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill 80, which is just a board bill for, if you don't know, we've had rolling gun battles along John and West Florissant regularly. Just would like to.
So, Board Bill 80, is that the only one?
Yes, sir. Board Bill 80 and 81.
80 and 81.
Yes, sir.
The move by Alderman from the third, seconded by Alderman from the first, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bills 80 and 81. There's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bills 80 and 81 at the tail end of the first reading calendar.
Thank you, sir.
So noted.
All right. First reading of Board Bills.
Board Bill 76 sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of Childress and Bradley, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on Childress at Bradley, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Bradley at Childress, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 77 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to amend the charter of the city to require that prior to the city entering into any private investment partnership agreement with the airport, with a private airport operator to manage and operate the City of St. Louis Public Airport and landing fields at St. Louis Lambert International Airport as permitted by the Federal Aviation Administration Airport Investment Partnership Program, such agreement first be submitted to the qualified voters of the city for approval to be voted upon at a citywide election and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 78 sponsored by President Reed, an ordinance adopted pursuant to Section 105 483 revised statutes of Missouri affirming, reaffirming the provisions of ordinance 62391 66691, seven, I'm sorry, 67617 68409 68934 70622, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal offices and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 79 sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment pertaining to location of corporate headquarters within the city, establishing an earning and payroll tax reimbursement account in support of projects described herein, approving a development and performance agreement related to such projects and authorizing execution thereof and authorizing certain other actions by city officials. Board Bill 80 sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance authorizing and directing the direct of streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the 4200 block of John Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the West Kirby Line of North Florissant where it intersects with the 4200 block of John Avenue. Board Bill 81 sponsored by Alderman Bosley, an ordinance repealing ordinance 63984 approved January 1997. Ordinance 58540 approved March 1982. Ordinance 53693 approved December 1965. And ordinance 58264 approved March 1981, all pertaining to the preservation of the public peace and safety in the City of St. Louis and for residents thereof by establishing a curfew applicable to juveniles and regulating their presence in public streets, alleys, right-of-ways, or other similar places, defining the duties of parents and guardians of juvenile and providing for their violation thereof, and in acting in lieu thereof, a new ordinance pertaining to the same subject matter and containing a penalty and severability and emergency clauses. That is the extent of first reading of Board Bills.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 79 to HUDs. Board Bill 80 to Streets. And Board Bill 81 to Public Safety.
So noted.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bills 76 and 80. To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 77. To the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 78. To the HUDs Committee, Board Bill 79. And to Public Safety, Board Bill 81. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following Board Bills were reported.
Please state your.
79, I think there was a request for that to be Ways and Means.
79.
Board Bill 79 to Ways and Means and Resolution 78 to HUDs.
Okay, we'll sign, Madam Clerk, please assign 79 to Ways and Means. And when we come to first reading resolutions, you'll just make the motion for it to go to HUDs. Madam Clerk, first, second reading.
The following Board Bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee. Board Bill 23 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1920 North Broadway. Board Bill 25 sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3230 Oregon. Board Bill 26 sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 2911 through 15 Ohio. Board Bill 53 sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 4629 through 4631 and 4715 Washington. Board Bill 54 sponsored by Alderman Todd, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 5125 Enright. Board Bill 61 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 720 through 812 South Teresa. Board Bill 70 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 56, I'm sorry, 5236 Vernon. The following Board Bills were reported out of the HUDs Committee. Board Bill 46 sponsored by Alderwoman Middlebrook, an ordinance amending ordinance 69782 approved June 25, 2014 by modifying the terms of real estate tax abatement and amending Section 6 of the attached redevelopment plan by extending the time of completion to June 25, 2021. Board Bill 52 sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1014 through 1018 Olive. Board Bill 55 sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, a redevelopment plan for 1900 through 34 Dr. Martin Luther King. Board Bill 66 sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 1221 Locust. Board Bill 69 sponsored by Alderman Volmer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not exceed $5,172,000 plus issuance cost principal amounts of tax increment and special district revenue notes Series 20AB of the city prescribing the form and details of such notes and the covenants and agreements made by the city to facilitate and protect the payment thereof, prescribing other matters relating thereto and containing the severability clause. Board Bill 72 sponsored by Alderwoman Hubbard, an ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 1528 and 1530 Locust. Board Bill 74 sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro, an ordinance amending ordinance 70494 approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to redevelopment agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and Pace Delmore Associates, LLC, authorizing other related actions and containing the severability clause. That is the extent of second reading of Board Bills.
Dispense with line item 14. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize.
Members of the Board, having voted on the prevailing side on Board Bill 50 floor substitute, I'd like to move to reconsider Board Bill 50 floor substitute for the purpose of placing it back on the perfection calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the seventh, that we move to reconsider, having voted on the prevailing side, move to reconsider the previous vote for Board Bill 50 and bringing it back to the perfection calendar for any changes. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero. Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. Twenty-one aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 50 floor substitute at the tail end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
Board Bill 62 sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Assistance to Firefighters Grant, to fund the 2018 apportionment and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing that emergency clause. That is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 1 as amended. I'm sorry. Board Bill 1 as amended, President Reed, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Volmer, budget for fiscal year 2020.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill Number 1 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Co-Sponsor. We had a very lively session of budget meetings for Board Bill, but do I need to make a motion to, we'll make a motion to pass Board Bill 1 as amended?
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth, seconded by Alderman from the seventh. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. With the $1.3 billion budget presented to us, we basically tried to rearrange some things to make requests that were important to the Board. Of those requests, many were met. It was, as opposed to last year's, someone asked me to describe the budget. If it was ice cream, this year was vanilla, as compared to last year's rocky road. We had a very good session. Some of the things we did get, we requested was a legislative researcher salary increase at the Board of Aldermen and a recorder position. Some of the things we did get, we requested was a legislative researcher salary increase at the Board of Aldermen and recorder position, additional equipment and medical supplies for the Fire Department. We have additional officer to excise. We added two communications positions for the wonderful folks who do our meetings and other things here. Another building inspector was added. And we also allotted five hundred thousand dollars for a crime prevention program that will be determined in the future. But the most, I guess the thing that stands out the most, when the department heads came to us, it wasn't money they were looking for. It was people who could work, which might entail what goes on in the personnel hearings coming over. The residency requirement came up constantly from department heads stating that they have all the money they need to do many things, but they do not have the people to do them. So maybe exploring the residency requirement is what the biggest thing I got, the most glaring thing that came out of all our hearings, that we need more people to fill these positions. So Alderman Howard, Alderwoman Howard might have fun with that in her meetings next week. But I am open to questions if anyone has any.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the sponsor yield for just quick question?
Alderman from the tenth, we yield a question to Alderman from the twelve.
Just for him, yes.
I appreciate that.
Please proceed.
I guess where I'm really disappointed at is nobody, I guess on the committee or even down here, city employees. I mean, city employees have been getting a one and a half to two percent for the last fifteen years. Their salaries haven't gone up much, so I think that's part of the problem of getting people here to work too. But I'm just very disappointed that we look for funds on every other program except for city employees getting, getting a raise. You know, the insurance goes up that much every year. Well, you know, they want, we, we want, I can say we because at the time I was a city employee, we went three or four years every year having to take voluntary two weeks off without pay because we were deemed in a budget crisis and couldn't meet our obligations according to E and A back then, but that wasn't necessarily true. But I just hope next year that we can look and find money from somewhere to give city employees at least, at least a four percent raise. But thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you. And we will probably have a little extra money. There was a little thing that happened the past few weeks here called the NHL playoffs, if no one remembers that, which we should have some more money in the coffers. And also hopefully the Cardinals can extend the seasons. Those things are very important to our economy, whether people believe so or not, and that will make a difference. And we can go through that next year. Alderman from the twelfth, anyone else have any questions?
Hold on for a second. Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Alderman from the tenth, yield for questions?
Alderman from the tenth, we yield a question to Alderman from the fourteenth.
Certainly, certainly.
Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
During the proceedings in the budget, were there references to Alderman not being able to satisfy the demands of the, their constituency because of the lack of personnel?
Well, that's, yeah, the, what came out, and that's the, the additional building inspector came about through that, trying to implement things, getting it to, and setting up a new program, as you're familiar with. We used to have a house-to-house inspection that went through the wards. They would divide the wards into a third every year and go through and knock and just do all these things. Working with the Building Division and with Mr. Oswald getting it, we have allotted a fifty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollar position for an additional inspector to help us go through that program again. Again, with forestry, we have all the equipment and everything we needed, but he's looking for workers. So that, that again was a problem that came up with him. He really wasn't asking for more money, he needs more employees. Same thing when you even talk to the Public Safety Director, trying to get things going. It's, it's a matter of not finding qualified people, are people applying for these jobs, so.
Right, and I just would like to say that we will be hearing that bill, and it does need to go before the voters because it is a charter change. And I would also like to let the Alderman from the twelfth know that I understand that Personnel is doing a salary study with the, with some recommendations to follow. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighteenth.
President, thank you Board of Alderpeople. I oppose that bill. I think that if you, if you, we have plenty of, a lot, plenty of people who are qualified to do any job that the city has open. The problem is, we are talking, in many cases, especially in North St. Louis, about somebody's police record who has already done their time for whatever they've done. And even when they don't have a police record, a person who has finished grade school can do many of those jobs. We're not talking about somebody discovering something new. We're talking about, in many cases, just simply doing simple jobs. For example, forestry. The reason they can't finish those jobs, though, though the part-time jobs, they need to have full-time jobs for people fifteen, no, less than fifteen dollars an hour with full benefits. Then we could find plenty of people. The problem, so the solution is to make, is to make those jobs fa, family-friendly, people-friendly, and then we will be, we have plenty of unemployment in St. Louis. There's no reason to go outside of St. Louis for police officers neither. Because we have plenty of people who would love to be police officers if the police culture would change. What we need to do, and what I mean by changing the police culture, is changing the racism inside the police department. Or making the police department respect the residents and, and protect and serve the way that they are supposed to do. And I'm opposed also to giving them a four percent raise. At, until they start doing what they're supposed to do. A good example is the stuff they had on Facebook. Until they, since, until they stop having the wall of, blue wall of files and lock up, root out those who are messing up inside the police department, I don't think they deserve another penny.
Thank you. Alderman from, Alderman from the twenty-third.
Mr. President, I wanted to address Alderman Todd's. So, and for maybe people that are new in here, the budget comes to us with all these things in it. If we don't pass it, then everything, the extra camera people, the recorder for the office here, the firefighter, the Narcan, that they have, all that goes away, and the budget will pass as it was given to us. So we only have an option of it passing, and we don't. So all the things you're talking about with the Police Department, it's in the bill when it came to us. What we would lose is the Fire Department getting the equipment they need. We would lose the camera people who are getting the extra people they need. We would lose the extra building inspector. All the things that we got put back in the budget would go away, and the budget would pass the way it was, the way it came to us. And, and that's, that's, I just, just, we're just giving everybody understanding. I, I do understand what Alderman Todd's saying, and certainly we could work together on things. But, but the way the budget works, we have to pass it, or it will pass on its own at the end of this month. And it'll pass without all the changes that we worked so hard to get. So the ambulances won't have the Narcan they need. The firefighters won't have the protection they need when they go into a fire. It's just as an explanation, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I think I want to first welcome the students from our summer camp program. The former Alderman Velma Bailey.
Let's give them a round.
Has been very religious and taken care of.
Welcome.
Our budget process is archaic. It is not as fluid and ongoing with oversight as most organizations have. Until we decide that we want to be serious about monitoring the budget and how we can change things throughout the year, it will just be what it is. The other part to that too is, we wait till the eleventh hour to complain about many things. And we're not complaining about the fact that most times when we have opportunities to increase the economic base so that you can have more money, we are so busy fighting so hard against all those things. So the city will still have trouble with the budget. We have infrastructure that is so old, it's crumbling every day. We've got crises every day, and it's not going to get any better. So we got to get smarter about that. The infrastructure must be maintained, even though we don't have eight hundred or nine hundred thousand people. We're constantly reducing, we're probably under three hundred thousand now. But that infrastructure is still there, and you still must deal with it. You'll still have to cut all that grass from all those vacant lots. You still need to repair all those pipes underground. All of that has to be done. But we're not focused on those things like we should be. When you look at the crime stats of a city this size, it is beyond criminal that this is what we deal with every day. And then we point ourselves, point ourselves to a system that is not designed to be successful. So when you go on and on about what the police didn't do and they should do, we got some bad boys out there, and they have to be dealt with. But they need to be dealt with in a serious way. So again, because now we have control of the Police Department, there needs to be an overhaul of their rules. People don't like it when you change rules, but sometimes you need to do that because it's not accommodating. I didn't say I didn't like police, I didn't say I don't need a police force. I said, you need to operate like any other corporation or entity out here and make sure that there is fairness. Make sure that you have the appropriate personnel policies and investigative rules in place to handle things. I've made sure that some people got fired, I've made sure that some people were dealt with appropriately. Because when people complain about things that don't make sense to me, I have to get to the bottom of it. But what I found is, if you get to the bottom of it, and if you approach it the right way, it is handled. So just getting on Twitter, and getting on Facebook, and Instagram is not the way you handle problems. So hopefully we will get that structure in place as we move forward. It was very important that we looked at some things that we changed in order for us just to be able to limp along this year. I appreciate the Chairman's work, I appreciate the Committee's work, and I appreciate what was sent back to us because they don't have to do it if they don't want to, and, and the budget just gets passed. So we go from here. But we should go from here with a plan. We have a budget committee that should be doing systemic review process throughout the year and being prepared when it's time to look at that budget next year. I've said this for the last ten years, it still hasn't happened, but maybe there's enough interest in it that it'll happen this time. I am not going to scold anybody for any decisions or concerns they had because at the end of the day, there is enough frustration at how we are operating to balance the world. But until we get serious about it, and we all come together and solve these problems, we will continue to look like we look, and we don't look good right now. We just don't. I can't go anywhere without getting valid complaints. You know, some people just think they're supposed to complain because they see you, but I'm talking about valid complaints. So what I want to do is say, we pass our budget, we still have the opportunity throughout the year to look at things as we move forward, and we definitely need to know every dollar that came in from the last few weeks and determine how best those funds should be used. So, Mr. Chairman, I again say thank you. I thought it was a good process that you used, and I'm more than willing to be on your team again, thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank our Chair of our Ways and Means. This year I learned more than I did in the two years I've been here, and I know I'm a new kid on the block. But you took a lot of patience with us, you educated us, and we went through things that I had never saw before in Ways and Means. So thank you very much because it was exciting this year. We did a lot of work, we had a lot of meetings, but it was worth it. And I learned some stuff that was added that I didn't even know you did. So thank you very much for the education.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I wanted to also echo my thanks to the Chairman of the Committee. I was able to sit in on a number of meetings, and it's, there is no better way to get to know your city than to sit through the budget process. And was particularly impressed with the Health Department presentation. Dr. Echols is, is doing good work over there, and hopefully we've got some good things coming out of there. I do want to also echo Alderman Arnowitz's concerns about raises for city employees. We, we need, we need to figure out ways to be paying our city employees more. And one of the concerns that I had throughout the process was, we also, we need to pay our employees here at the Board of Aldermen more. Our staff works incredibly hard for us, they, they make sure that we can do the jobs that we do, and we're, we're not getting them the raises that they need. But over in Room two hundred, we have staff in Room two hundred that is getting seven point seven percent increases. We, and if you, you know, I, there, there were some new news articles that came out about this, and the explanation was that the Chief of Staff has more of a degree than the previous Chief of Staff in the Mayor's Office. But the Chief of Staff, from the time that he was named as Assessor in the City of St. Louis, is actually getting a twenty-nine point five percent increase from being the Assessor for the City of St. Louis and then moving to the Chief of Staff position. Now, those are different positions, but I want, I want to highlight that these things are happening, and we need, we need to be paying attention to what our executive is doing with their own budget. And I think that it is only fair to have those things be open and accountable to the public when we're talking about that. So the Assessor's salary was a hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars for the year that the Chief of Staff was in that position. And then the, the salary named in last year's budget was a hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fourteen. The Mayor's Chief of Staff was announced that he was going to be taking that role on June first of last year. So when we passed the budget on June thirtieth, the salary that was reflected in there should have been the salary that the Chief of Staff was receiving. But the Chief of Staff has said that he's been receiving a salary of a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and forty dollars for the entirety of that time since he started on July first. Now, if this is within the gradient of our Personnel Department, then fine, but our city employees are struggling. And that is, it's a thirty-seven thousand dollar increase from time as Assessor to Chief of Staff, which is actually equal to all of our salaries out here on the floor. So, you know, if we are all, we continue as the Board of Aldermen and as our staff to make sacrifices to not increase our salaries, to not, not increase our staff salaries to provide as much money back to the general revenue as we can for, for departments that need it, for other, for other employees that need it. And I, I would hope that Room two hundred would do the same. I also, I also do want to thank the Committee for the five hundred thousand dollars moved into the Crime Prevention Fund. I, you know, we were able to sit in on a couple of really great meetings with Cure Violence this week. There's a lot of energy there, and I thank you, Mr. President, for your support as well of that program. It is really incumbent on us to find something to, to stop this process, right? We, we have a violent crime problem in our city, and we have to start looking from the ground up, we have to start investing in that. So I'm, I have been assured that the money from the federal agreement does not include immigration detainees. I had some constituents ask me about that, and so we are not, we are not accepting more immigration detainees under this contract. These are predominantly weapons charges, that kind of thing. And while I, while I don't want to add more prisoners into our jails in order to keep facilities open, I am glad that we're, we're moving some necessary money into there. So I hope that we can continue that trend, and we can continue to flip the public safety funding. funding, and fund more towards crime prevention, so that we can really get ahead of some of these things. So thank you so much again, Mr. Chairman and committee, for all of your work, and for everyone who participated in the project.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I inquire if the Alderman from the 10th...
Alderman from the 10th will yield a question to the Alderman from the 1st.
Naturally.
All right, Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
That's all right. Alderman, I heard you say that there was some exchange, I guess, between you and the administration, and that they had, that one of the things that came out of this, that all of the departments said that they had plenty of money, but they just didn't have the people. Is that what I understood?
Of the department heads before, as I'd say, that 80% were satisfied. The Public Safety Director came back asking for no raise in his budget. The same thing was occurring throughout, that we have a budget we're happy with. That's why our changes are so small here. The things we came up with were more that came from the board, from the committee, and from other Aldermen, such as Alderman Rice attending, that had suggestions and wanted to do things. That's where these changes basically came from. Most of the department heads have open positions that are not being filled.
And so Public Safety Director, did he add a zoning inspector? Because right now, I found this out a couple of years ago, we have one zoning inspector for the entire city of St. Louis, and so when you go around North St. Louis, you see so much environmental visible clutter, where people are breaking the rules, where people have all this signage, and in other parts, probably in the 20th Ward, they are just breaking the rules. How do we just have one zoning inspector? And did he add any? I thought we would maybe have one per section.
No, again, that didn't get, it was actually our, again, the Alderman from the 14th, and came up with the action, they actually wanted to add two more building inspectors. We wound up getting one more building inspector out of this. Again, from Public Safety, he was satisfied with the budget he had.
Okay, well, then I'd say that the Public Safety Director, he is one of my constituents, and he complains about this very thing that I'm saying himself.
You might want to have a conference with him.
Oh, I am going to go talk to him, because we need at least three more zoning inspectors. So maybe he can move those people around from building and put them into zoning, because all of these people are breaking the law with all this signage, and all of these flashing lights that look like you're in Las Vegas or something like that. It is. Besides pollution, there's different kinds of pollution, and we have environmental pollutions and visual pollution all through North St. Louis, and it's always people who live someplace else and think it's okay for our community. I heard that you said that 85% of the people, was Forestry one of the people said they had enough people? I mean, enough money?
Forestry, yeah, they, Forestry had gotten all their equipment taken care of last year and updated. I have a, where's my little crib sheet? Because their budget is up. Their budget is actually up, and yeah, he has problems filling his positions. We didn't add any more positions to him. Here it is. Yeah, Forestry, War Capital Building, War Capital fully funded is up, is 9.1 million. Building Demo Fund actually went up, Affordable Housing, and we increased the vacant building moving budget by $350,000 also. So he's looking for workers to do the work, but we have the money there for him.
So last term, I was the chair of Public Employees. We actually invited Forestry in. You ought to look at that. And in fact, I'm going to pull it up and get it to you, because Forestry, the Alderman from the 18th hit it on the head, and I guess you have to live in my community to see this. Forestry tries to get by with part-time workers, and that's a problem. And it's really a problem, because they need probably, and I think he said he needed a couple of hundred extra people full-time, and so, no, you're not filling it, filling it part-time.
That's something that could be addressed through Personnel and through Public Employees, yes.
Right, but it also is from the administration, who was there and heard that, and the problem is the administration with Forestry, they are trying to do a policy that breaks the law. We have a law in the city about how tall your grass can be. Forestry's policy is to cut, if you have vacant houses in your ward, they cut them every eight weeks or so, six to eight weeks, and sometimes more. And most of them are LRA, and there are thousands of LRA property, which I want to take up for Forestry, because they were not initially, that was not what they were supposed to do, and they've been assigned to that. But irrespective, they still have it assigned to them, and they also cut lots every four to six weeks. So what happens in our community, and I'm saying North St. Louis, I can't speak for other communities, I can't speak in that we got a list from them of where the vacant houses, and so when you have all these vacant houses, all of my constituents have their grass cut. The only people who do not have their grass cut is the city of St. Louis/LRA, and they're breaking the law, because the very policy that they have in place is illegal. If you do not cut your grass in a house at six, eight weeks, they will send you something saying you have to cut your grass, and they're going to fine you, yet the city is breaking its own law. And so then it makes for them to downgrade the standard of my community, because the administration, and I'm saying the mayor's office, through Todd Walterman, has got an idiotic policy about when to cut grass. So if your policy doesn't match our law, you ought to know better than that, if you're the operations director. So if you don't have to deal with this, you probably don't know about this, but I can drive down streets after streets after street where the people have cut their grass, and in some cases, they cut the front yards, some of the other ones, the backyards are fenced in, but I have places where Forestry has not been in the backyard for maybe four or five years, and it's a health hazard. So you've got animals and everything else, and I like the commissioner, I mean, the director of Forestry, Greg Hayes, is a good people, and I think that he works really hard, but he testified, he told the truth about this, because they can't do all of this with the people that they have. But I know a lot of people want to work full-time, but as long as we got this thing of, we're only going to have these part-time workers that work from April or May to September, which is ridiculous, because we cut our grass in April, and I'm sometimes cutting, well, I don't cut grass anymore, but the person who cuts my grass cuts sometime into November. So when you don't have full-time people, you can make your mouth say anything, but it's really not the truth. So, and he did say on this tape that he needed full-time people. So my suggestion to the administration is that stop trying to lie with statistics and to address the problem full-on, which is to add a couple of hundred extra, because that's what he said he needed, full-time workers, and let's see if we get people, when they know they're going to get benefits and things like that, and then let's start cutting the grass longer, if we got temporary people, and then let's keep those temporary people all through the winter, so they can get into these backyards with backhoes and things like that and clean it up, because you're making neighborhoods look like that they don't care, when it's the city that doesn't care about them. And I particularly am bringing that to your attention, because I had an 80-something-year-old woman call me watching the Rams, and we saw the people celebrate, not the Rams, I'm sorry, the Blues. We saw the people celebrating, and we saw that downtown was a bit trashy, and there's different people who said why that happened. I don't think we had enough trash cans, so I go on that we should have had more trash cans out, but some people said we had enough, and that the people from other parts of our metropolitan area didn't care about downtown. I don't choose to believe that. Whatever it was, we had a lot of trash, but they saw that in two days, that trash was picked up. So then they called me and said, how can they pick up trash in two days downtown, but we've been calling about somebody dumping or whatever, and you're not getting that up? So they are very irritated about that. I've been saying for many years now, stop blaming Alderman for this stuff. That is an executive decision. Those people work for the executive department, and we should not be saying the Alderman doesn't care about getting trash picked up. I'm going to say the mayor's office and Todd Walterman doesn't care about getting trash picked up where they don't live, because you sent a very bad, because they saw the mayor out there. She sent a very bad message to the people in my community, that she's out there picking up trash, but she can't send the people who work for the city of St. Louis to pick up trash in a proper way. And when I started this board, we didn't charge for trash, and then we started, then we added more, but we got rid of, we used to, you could go online, and they would tell you, these are the days specifically when your trash is supposed to be picked up, and they had it on your dumpsters, and then if they didn't pick it up the next day, you could call. Now, if you go online, they say, we guarantee we'll pick your trash up once, not twice, we'll pick it up once. They don't tell you when, so it makes it hard for the citizens to complain that trash is not picked up, because they don't even know a day when it is supposed to be picked up. When you're dealing with this kind of thing, then it appears from your statements, oh, everything is great with the city, we just need to get rid of that residency rule, when it's not the residency rule, we need to get rid of people doing things, or doing, making policies from Room 200 that adversely affect people's lives, and then they act like everything is great. It is not. Also heard that you, I went to the Board of E&amp;A. I haven't really been over to mayor's office in probably since 2001. Don't hang out there, but I did go to the Board, the last pass, not the one that was this week, but the last week, I went to the Board, to E&amp;A meeting, after I got an email from the comptroller, who never puts out those kind of letters, so I was alarmed enough that I went there. What I saw in E&amp;A is that there's kind of an exchange between the Ways and Means Committee and E&amp;A. There were some things that you all had recommended that they be cut, and such as police overtime, and so what happened, I saw, is them putting it back in, and then giving some other things, and kind of exchanging things out. I guess my concern is, a few years ago, we got a, it was all over the papers, about $6 million, $5 to $6 million worth of overtime from the police, that we have never, ever, ever gotten an answer for. I agree with the Alderman from the 19th, when she says, we don't have budget oversight, okay? And we don't follow the things, okay? So here we are, protecting police overtime. What the citizens hear is that we got like 12, 14 policemen under indictment. We got this thing going on with these racist posts on Facebook. We got a police department that we insisted on taking over, which I did not support, by the way. And I don't think that we were ready to take over a police department, because we didn't know what it entailed. Yes, we should want it as a city, but we don't have a police board, we don't have places for citizens to complain, we've made the districts way bigger. The sixth district is two districts in itself. So when the people see all of this stuff, and then they see that we're saying that the budget is fine, and everything is okay, and it's just that we need, that we need to get rid of the residency rule, I would beg your pardon and say, that residency rule is not the problem. The rule is, the problem is something much greater than that. And so the mayor and the president put the, in exchange for, I don't know, whatever they did, they put the police overtime back in the budget, and the mayor made a statement about, we don't want to get rid of police overtime. Yeah, I do. I want to get rid of it until they explain what happened to $6 million worth of overtime, how they were able to get that, and that, to this day, we really have not had a satisfactory answer as to how that occurred. I don't usually, I don't vote for the budget. I know you all do a very hard job in trying to get it through. I, myself, was part of the problem, because last year, I sponsored a pay bill that gave the police a $6 million raise. I was not happy with that, because some of the people we gave raises, that six, I'm sorry, not $6 million, $6,000 raises, are those people now that are charged with crime. We did not give a raise based on if you merited a raise, we just gave across the board. So the best police officer, who I think many are, that don't do anything wrong, got the same raise as people who maybe should not have gotten that raise, and I'm hoping we do something different this year. So my question becomes, so when the E&amp;A restored the police raises, did then the Board, did the Ways and Means Office, I mean, the Ways and Means Committee, did then they agree to restore them and took a vote on that?
Well, the process, when it comes back to us, we requested, the things we wanted weren't available. The only money we had before us, when we were looking at things as it went around, would be the overtime budget, which, in reality, even if we take that, it will still be fully funded, because it's, that's the way it happens, unfortunately. So when it came back, you know, the money they found from the $500,000 being generated from the government agreement between the U.S. Marshals and City for the transportation and storage of prisoners, was money that, you know, only the Board of E&amp;A had available to them to do. So I guess we were happy with what we were getting. We got almost everything we requested, so it wasn't a matter of where the money came from, as long as the money was appropriated.
So let me say a little bit, if you guys didn't okay it, and we don't okay it, they can't just put it back in, okay? But I understand exchange, that is part of politics. So you guys did, it's the answer, okay?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay. And so let's ask about this crime prevention, $500,000. I've been getting a lot of calls from outsides about that, I don't know if you, and so, can you tell me what was before committee as far as crime prevention?
Well, it came up, the Alderman from the 19th made the proposal on the, at the last part of the hearing before we went to E&amp;A, stating that she would like the half a million dollars for Cure Violence. That was what we requested. What came back was, we have the $500,000 for a crime prevention program to be determined, and they have parameters set for that, that this program must utilize prevention intervention, community mobilization, to reduce shootings and killings. The funding should be dedicated to public health anti-violence program, that is in evidence, let me turn my page, my hands don't work like they used to when I was younger.
You get better.
Base policy, the program must be proven to reduce shootings and killings by a minimum of 30%, and has been a proven effective reduced shooting and killings in similar-sized municipalities. It must form a joint coordinated effort between academia, nonprofits, clergy, business leaders, city service, public safety partners, and others. So this is, we have the money there, and now it's time to find the program that fits it best, and I believe the decision does rely on the Public Safety Director.
So are we going to put that out for some kind of bid? Because I'm hearing from organizations that are saying, I'm tired of the same organizations, I'm not going to say any names, they get the money, they don't do anything, and we want to look at different organizations. So how will that be handled?
I believe it's being handled, they're having hearings right now and going through the process. Alderman from the 19th is more intimately involved with this process than I am. It was actually her baby, so she has the knowledge on that more now. I always defer to people who know more than me, which means I defer a lot.
Okay.
But, go ahead.
Okay, but, so we don't have any specific person right now that's going to handle it? It's going to be handled right now as we go through the process?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
I believe the Cure Violence people actually met with the president and some of the Public Safety Director already.
If $500,000 can do it, and those signs that say, we must stop killing each other, we're doing it.
Well, it's a process where, I believe it came on the hearings, that'll create enough to handle a few areas. The actual need is more like $1 million to do it properly throughout the city, but this is the starting point, and they're hoping that this would move it on to get other people involved, and maybe get some grants to help out with the other $500,000, if it shows it's working.
And another question, did every department come before you?
The departments were requested that have, that, you know, out of the budget, there's a department you're requesting. I didn't have the airport come through, they're an enterprise, you know, we just stuck with the guts, you know, the day-to-day, everything that keeps the city moving.
So if you didn't feel like you had the need to question, some people didn't come before you?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll be, the Public Safety Director stated he did not have any requests, but the fire chief came through, and the NARCAN, the $110,000 we gave them, was a direct response to the fire chief himself coming to us and compelling us that this is a necessity, we must have this, and that's where it came from, from a direct plea, not from the department head, but from the fire chief himself.
So did the building director, the building commissioner, and who else? Did the police chief come before us?
Yes.
Okay. And the police chief didn't ask for?
No, he did not. And neither did the building commissioner. We were actually asked of him. We asked, as I stated before, we requested two more inspectors, when Board of E&amp;A gave us one.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I do appreciate what the Ways and Means Committee does. I do know that our hands are tied on many things. I don't vote for the budget, because, not because the Ways and Mean Committee, it's because I think that the Room 200 does not understand or care about the concerns that people in my community care about. One of them is public safety. When you don't cut grass, and you're breaking your own laws, and you have a policy that says you will not cut grass in the way it's supposed to, you're doing that purposefully. You could easily change that policy. You could, there needs to be neighborhood standards. It is not right when you drive down the 4,800 block of Sacramento, and every house is cut except for LRA, and that's all through my community. I've got a lot of homeowners, so the only properties that are not being cut are the LRA properties. It is also not right that, so they know I drive my ward, so they'll cut the front yard, but we have yards that have not been cut for five years. That means there are animals and all kind of things. That's a health problem that this administration is creating, and so I would suggest that they look at hiring some more full-time forestry workers, that they, if they're not going to do full-time, that they keep part-time throughout this year. At least, they get some backhoes, they go into these backyards. go into these backyards. You know, I raised the heck about the trash a few years ago, and it was on the front page of the Post-Dispatch. I'm going to do, take all of the press through all these backyards if the mayor's office does not get into these backyards. These are not the people's fault. This is Room 200's fault, and it is causing a health hazard in many of our communities. We also, the forestry has not been able to cut branches and trees and things like that because there was such a problem with our trash that they had to, for the last year or so, they took everything from forestry and put it to picking up the trash. But that doesn't work either. That just means you don't have enough people. And to continue to blame the residency rule is ridiculous. It is a policy that's coming from Room 200. And it, and what people do when they're pushing an agenda, and that agenda is get rid of the residency rule, they create problems and make problems on purpose so that people say, "Well, we got to do something because this is not working." Oh, but when they put the trash on the front page of the Post-Dispatch for three or four Sundays in a row, and then they also had it on the television, all of a sudden, we could address trash. So if you need negative attention to get things done, I can bring that to you. I would really prefer that the mayor's office hear this and that they change the policy about grass cutting, and that they get more people in forestry, and they leave them full-time, and they hire more people, and stop trying to use this residency rule. I will not be voting for this because of the things that I've talked about and others that are in this board bill. It is something that is the mayor's budget or the E and A's budget. It is not a budget that the Board of Alderman put forth, and we kind of have to deal with it. Yes, if we don't pass it, then there's, the original bill that submitted by E and A goes into effect. But a lot of us can vote no as a protest vote. And for me, mine is a no vote for protest until we get things cleaned up. And this summer, I'm going to be taking all the press I can through these backyards and alleys so people can see that the policy that they're implementing in North St. Louis continues to be, you can call it the Team Four Plan, you can call it the Mayor, Light of Crusoe Plan, you can call it the Mayor Francis Slay's Plan, you can call it whatever you need to. But it's being implemented, and it's hurting places where the people keep their property up and own it. So why is it that only LRA's property is the one that's not being, being cut? Why aren't you picking up trash in alleys? Why aren't you emptying when people dump? Why don't we have a better policy about dumping? These are things that come from Room 200, and the people seek a solution, and we're not getting any except for, well, that's just what it looks like in North St. Louis. No, it does not. It looks like that because you're forcing it to look like that. And again, I will be asking for a roll call so that I can vote no.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I actually rise to recognize Sarah Johnson from the Metro Trans Umbrella Group of St. Louis, Metropolitan St. Louis. Sarah, I invited him down to join us today because I've had several of our colleagues reach out about the Pride Parade and the inclusion of our trans brothers and sisters in the movement, and asked him to participate in dialogue with some of our colleagues today. So I'd like to again welcome Sarah Johnson as my honor guest.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alderman from the 18th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Board of Alderpeople. I would like to revisit the force, the budget again. First of all, we talked about E and A. E and A, I know, all the people know that it's, and the president knows it's composed of the president, the comptroller, and the mayor. So if the money can, and these are elected officials, if it does go back, well, the, let me be very clear. I didn't come down here to just go along with the status quo. I came down here to get the services that my constituents are paying for. For example, in forestry right now, I was driving through my ward. They cut the trees and left trees all over the ward in the street. They cut the trees and left trees all over the wards in the alleys. People can't even get through the alleys. I went through the alleys walking. There are garages falling down, and debris is all in the, and all in the, all in the garages. There are, when they cut the grass, they don't cut around and shrubber and foliage. They refuse to cut around, cut it and then pick it up. They leave it there. And also, when they leave trees, I have certain parts of my ward where they use little baby trees. Now it looks like a jungle. So that is, and the residents are calling me, they expect me. When they sent me down here, they know who I am because I've been, was a committed man for 23 years. They expect me to stand up for them. They pay taxes, and they expect 100% of services, and I will not come down here and do what be popular. I'm down here to get services that my residents are paying for, and I will not stop until our community is serviced the same as all other communities in this city.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 19th.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I, I am very, very much enamored by a lot of the comments that have been made. But at the end of the day, without a budget, everything reversed back without voting this budget out, it reverts back to how it came to us. And if you want to lose some of the opportunities that you did put in place, that's what will happen. And we are not an entity of one. We are a body of legislators. And a body of legislators has to work together for improvement. And in case anybody didn't know, you don't control the budget. You don't have the opportunity to sign your name on the dotted line, but not one check, ever. Not one dollar. So we need to work together in unison to make sure that we are more successful in our endeavors down here. Again, I thank you for this budget process, how it came out. It could have been a lot worse, but we did accomplish some things. But again, if you want to focus, let's focus throughout the year and get some things changed. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, sir. I know we put a lot of work into the budget, and I appreciate everybody who worked on it. You know, it takes a lot of time to put together all these numbers. We're dealing with a $1.1 million, $1.2 billion budget. I just want to add a few things, just to put some things on everybody's mind. As we talk about ensuring that our city can survive, we are dwindling in population every 10 years. You know, we can say that we are at 312,000 or 310,000, but we know we are somewhere around 300,000 or a little bit less than that. As the numbers continue to dwindle, individuals, if we open up this residency rule, will take the funds that we give them after paying them, and they will go out to the county and spend those funds where it is that they live. So that's a reduction in the amount of money that goes into our general fund and the amount of money that we have to execute, things that we need, that we know need to be done in the city for our progression. And I don't ever want to always make things black and white in this city, but we have to understand that we do have some issues that we all currently need to work out. You know, some books were put on our desk, and I talked about this last week, which is our equity indicators. We'd be remiss not to really pay attention to these books. This is the reason why the city is lopsided. This is the reason why people are being murdered. I don't care if we put $2 million into the Cure Violence program. If we're not looking at the root cause of violence, if we're not looking at why our city is, is where it is right now, today, and what we can do to be 10 steps ahead of ourselves, then we all lose regardless. So our child well-being indicators, just on page 28, once again, in child poverty, black children are nearly four times as likely as white children to live in households when incomes at or below our poverty line. Child food insecurity, black households with children are nearly six times as likely as white households with children to receive food stamps. Emergency room visits, black children are four times as likely as white children to visit emergency rooms. Child asthma, black children are more than 10 times, not one, not two, not five, not eight, 10 times as likely as white children to visit emergency rooms for asthma-related complications. That's something to think about. That's not just based on the pollution that exists in the earth. We live around these vacant buildings that have asbestos in them, that has lead peeling off the windows, and we have not done what's necessary as a city, who is one of the biggest slum lords in the city, which is LRA, to ensure that we address these issues. We have rain pouring into these vacant buildings regularly that create these environmental problems that we have right now. You know, as the building is caving in, you have walls breaking down. You have asbestos being released into the air, and children are right next door breathing these things in. And we talk about complications with lead. We all know that breeds brain problems. So it's a reason why we are unstable and things are going on within our communities that you might not understand. But all of us have an opportunity to address those issues before they become issues. You know, talking about lead, the child lead poisoning, and black children are nearly as twice as likely as white children to test positive for elevated blood lead levels. Juvenile refers to court, to court. Black children are nearly five times as likely as white children to be referred to juvenile court. So our 2018 equity score is 25.75% out of 100. So when it comes down to ensuring that, you know, right now, we have to pass our budget based on, you know, what the mayor has passed down, and we have to make sure that it does not revert back, completely understand that. My focus is just in ensuring that we all put things on our minds so as we continue to progress in our positions and do what we can to progress this city, that we actually pay attention to the things that have been presented in front of us. So we won't be talking about the same thing four years from now when it's time for us to be reelected, talking about how children are getting murdered, buildings are not being torn down, or buildings are creating a health hazard for us. You know, we all have the control, or the opportunity to control some of the things that go on in this city. Once again, I appreciate everybody's work, but I, I want to make sure that we realize that we are creating the environment that exists in this city. The 28 of us, plus the mayor and the individuals that she employs, that actually controls this city. And we have, you know, due diligence to the residents of this city to ensure the public's safe and healthy of the residents who live here. As the population continues to dwindle, if we get down to 250,000, 280,000, it is us that are in these seats today that will be held accountable for the reduction in population. When we get to a point where we cannot pay our bills, and we all talk about where it is that we are right now, some say the city is broke. I refuse to believe that. We have to figure out what it takes for us to sustain the population that we have right now. If people continue to leave, we will continue to have a reduction in the amount of general funds that come through the city's hands and the amount of services that we can provide for the residents who live here right now, today. Just ensure as all the people and people who live in more affluent communities and the people who live in, in poverty or more impoverished communities, you know, we have to kind of talk with each other a little bit more and ask, "What are you doing in your community to help it be more affluent? What's not being done in less affluent communities?" And what it is, we need to be doing, working together as a board to kind of bring things to a different position. So 10 years from now, we can say we all work together in changing this city, opposed to just one person raising their hand and saying, "I did this." It's about us, working together and doing something collectively. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I, I just, I encourage everybody, if you have not, really look at these racial, this indicator book that the mayor has put together, because it's very informal, and it gives you an idea of why we talk about the things that we talk about and the racial inequities that exist within this city. If we're not having those conversations in the Board, then people won't have them at home. They won't. We are the leaders of the city. We are the individuals that start the conversations. We are the reason why people have these conversations at home. So let's ensure that people have these hard conversations, and we can start doing what's necessary to bridge that gap from one side of the city to the other side of the city, from one ethnicity to the other ethnicity. It's not just blacks and whites. We're talking about Asians. And I want to make sure that I addressed something last week, or the week before last, that I may have said that some people were pretty upset about. I myself am never trying to talk bad about any race of people because we all have a group of individuals that we are fighting for, whether you're fighting to make more millionaires, millionaires, or less people who don't have, you know, the opportunity to create those type of funds, just get to a particular point where they can survive. You know, it was brought to my attention by a colleague that I may have said something to upset, you know, an ethnicity of Asian individuals. I meant no harm. I don't mean any disrespect for any ethnicity within the city of St. Louis. I just want us to all work together in improving this city. You know, I never at any point in time want to only point the finger at one race because we all are accountable to our own, and we all accountable for our actions. But I do like to point out the inequities that exist. I do think it's important for us to have those conversations so we can get to a point where we are looking at the city as a whole and not as a few. So for anybody that may feel bothered by my remarks from the last time I made them about ward reduction or anything else that we were talking about, I do apologize to you individuals for things that may have made you feel like I was being unfair because that is not the goal. I just want us to start working together as a board, working together as a city, and really looking at what it is that we can do to advance this city because we all lose as we lose population. And we may not feel the effects of that right now, but five or 10 years from now, we will feel the effects from it. And we will understand what it is that we have done right now in these positions that we are in today to create whatever environment exists five or 10 years from now. So once again, I appreciate the Ways and Means Committee working hard on our budget. Well, we most certainly need to make changes and think about what will be a year from now. We're not trying to hurry up that year when it comes to try to figure out what needs to be done. We got to be 10 steps ahead of ourselves like other cities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 10th, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank everyone for their comments. Thank everyone for their input. What we're doing here, and we have a budget before us that we've amended, gotten most of everything we requested. The ward capital is fully funded, 9.1 million. We have a building demo fund up from 3.5 to 4.47 million. The affordable housing funding is up to $6.6 million this year. We have crime prevention funding of $500,000, increased vacant mowing by 350. We have added staff to the Board of Alderman. We have necessities in NRCAM for the fire department. We've added an agent to excise. We have two communication division employees added. We have another building inspector. And the 500, what these things are, if we do not vote for the budget, all these things go away. We get the budget they presented to us. So I urge everyone to vote for these changes, to vote for this budget and pass it. And I would like to thank the members of my committee for the long, hard meetings we had. Madam Weiss, especially for all her assistance, for all the staff, for putting you through those three and four-hour meetings. I thank everyone for everything. So in that, I close.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, second by Alderman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill 1 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the rope.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Orion, Alderman Con, Alderman Clerk Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Martin, Alderman Green, Alderman Mohammed. 19 a votes, three no votes, and one present. 19 I votes, three no votes, and one present.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 10th, and perfected Board Bill 1
Board Bill 31, Committee Sub, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estiment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed an aggregate $17,259,000 plus issuance clause, principal amount of tax increment, revenue notes, Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3, and Phase 4, City Foundry, St. Louis, RPA 2, Redevelopment Project Series 20AB of the city, and containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 31, Committee Substitute.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I move for, uh, perfection of Board Bill number 31.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Uh, yeah, I renew my motion.
Uh, Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I rise in opposition to Board Bill 35. I made my, I'm sorry, 31, I made, uh, my objections about this TIF, and especially after we got reports from Alderman from the 17th about his TIFs. We can make all the things look pretty and fluffy and talk about how great they are, but when you start looking at the numbers and the loss, and the loss of potential revenue, because somehow people think that if, uh, you didn't work getting that revenue, that the city never is supposed to increase this revenue, uh, or the, and in this case, the St. Louis Public Schools, that somehow that's okay. So I don't need to expound any further, I will be, I'm asking for a roll call, and I will be voting no on this board bill and the TIFs, and they need to stop at some point. And Alderman from the 17th has produced more TIFs than everybody else here sitting together, and I am opposed to them, and I don't think that they are needed for all of the projects that happen in the 17th ward, and it is a waste of St. Louis Public Schools money, and we are going to be able to take over our public schools in probably in, in a month. And I'm hoping that the new elected officials have some more to say about, um, the TIF money that is being taken away for potential money, property taxes being taken away from the St. Louis Public Schools.
Any further discussion, any further discussion?
Roll call.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize the close on the perfection of Board Bill 31, Committee Substitute.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, members of the board, this is, uh, uh, this RPA, or, uh, the, the portion of this TIF has already been approved, it was a $17 million TIF. All this does is, uh, as the note is issued, this is kind of the mechanics or the nitty gritty of how the city treats this. In other words, setting up a, an account, a comptroller's office, and specifying, you know, where the money goes when it comes in, and at what point each of these, uh, portions of the, uh, $17 million can be, um, allocated in the order in which they're paid off. This is, um, what, what's anticipated, and some of this is already starting to happen, I, I don't know if you saw it yesterday, but there was a grocery store that was announced for this project, uh, A Fresh Time, which is a first time grocery store in the city. Uh, already been announced is a new Elmo, a brew house, which is a movie theater that is not in the St. Louis market at this time, they, they serve dinner and movies. Uh, there's gonna be a 400 space parking structure, a five story office building, and another five story office building is what the four phases are. Uh, these are largely things that are not currently in the city. This is being built on, I think, approximately a 12 acre site that was previously contaminated. And, um, so, um, and again, we've already voted and actually approved for this 17 million. We have actually made some progress on it, and so that's the purpose why these, uh, this particular piece of legislation is, uh, needed today. So with that, I renew my motion and request your favorable consideration.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, that we perfect Board Bill 31, Committee Substitute, there's been a request for roll call, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Norrion, I'm sorry, Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Todd. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. 19 I votes, one no vote, one abstained, and one present.
By your vote, staying the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and perfected Board Bill 31, Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 35, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental corporation project agreement among the city, the City Foundry Transportation Development District, and the City Foundry Community Improvement District, and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 35.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, this is a, a board bill that, oh, I'm sorry, move for, um, uh, perfection of Board Bill number 35.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th, Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Uh, yes, uh, this is a, another board bill that indicates the progress that is being made there as we've, um, as part of our initial agreement and understanding with the developer, the developer would finance part of the, uh, project through the creation of a community improvement district or a tax transfer, uh, taxing, T, what is it, a taxing, uh, TDD, I'm sorry, getting all my acronyms mixed up, uh, which is an additional sales tax that is charged to the, uh, to the, uh, customers of the particular site. As part of that, uh, agreement or initial understanding that we have with the developer, that money would be redirected, uh, to, uh, pay off, uh, and prioritize the payoff of any TIF notes. So in other words, we're using that revenue to try to accelerate or pay off the TIF notes faster. Uh, and, uh, what this does is when they say an intergovernmental agreement, the explanation for that is, is those taxing districts are in essence under state statute, a separate governmental entity, and so this is creating an agreement between those separate governmental entities and the city that they are going to go ahead and direct that new revenue that's going to be that sales tax or surtax on, on their sales there, to go ahead and, and pay that over to the city so that we can go ahead and hopefully accelerate the rate at which the, uh, TIF notes are being paid off, to actually begin addressing some of the issues that we talked about several weeks, several weeks back, where some of these TIF notes are, are, our goal is to eventually start trying to get those paid off, in other words, trying to do a better job than what had been done before. So with that, I renew my motion, and, I guess, uh, and, and request favorable consideration for Board Bill number 35.
All right, any, there's been a request for roll call, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, there's been a request for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion
Board Bill 50, floor sub, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Parking Commission, make an appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital, equipment, and improvement expenses, including lease purchase agreements involving parking division assets and debt services expenses of the Parking Division of the Treasurer's Office, Keel and City Hall Parking, Information Technologies Offices, Argyle Parking, Shoto Building, and Parking, Williams Paper Parking, Central Downtown Parking, Buckingham Parking, Couples Parking, and Justice Parking for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, amounting in the aggregate to the sum of $17,976,481, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 50, floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 50, floor substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by the Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, happy Budget Day. Based on conversation and debate last Friday, I thought I would do some due diligence and ensure that what's being proposed by me was decent and in order. I, I'm gonna ask if the Alderwoman from the 8th Ward will yield for question.
Alderwoman from the 8th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, I will.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Yeah, Alderwoman, first of all, I want to thank you for the conversation last Friday, and you basically stated that the proposed amendment was unconstitutional. Uh, after doing, um, further research and acquiring from the City Council's office, I've realized that although it's not unconstitutional, it does conflict with the city charter, because the state constitution does give us the authority to regulate how we pass our appropriation bill, so I want to thank you for that first and foremost, but I have a question for you, because the reason that this came about, in which is language that I prefer not to insert, is because it's become very difficult to get the treasurer to obey our local ordinances. And based on your conversation with me, I'm going to assume that you take that very seriously, would that be correct? Ensuring that we obey our local ordinances and...
Sure, yes, of course.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you this. Since the treasurer doesn't seem to want to obey our local laws by having monthly meetings, would you be interested in working with me crafting legislation, amending our parking code that would encourage the treasurer to have regular meetings as stated?
So I don't want to speak to things that are currently in litigation, um, through there, I, and I am not here to speak on behalf of the Treasurer's Office in any way, shape, or form. Um, but I, I again support, if you wouldn't, if you would like to make changes to the Parking Commission, I think going through the regular legislative process is a fine way to do that.
Would you be willing to help on that?
I will meet with you and discuss it, absolutely.
Uh, okay, thank you. Uh, the Alderwoman from the first, is the Alderwoman from the first, will you yield
Alderwoman from the first, will you, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 22nd?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Alderwoman from the first. I want to also thank you for our discussion last Friday, because you brought up something I thought was very important. Your statement was that if the board bill had failed, then it would pass as originally submitted. And after doing further research and getting opinion of the City Council's office, because I was very concerned about that, um, that's not true. Uh, unfortunately, we found ourselves, due to the litigation and the courts, the local courts, the circuit clerk, a circuit court, ruling that the statute is unconstitutional, we now fall within the purview of this, our charter. And so therefore, based on the City Council's opinion, this bill would have to go to ENA in order to pass and be appropriately appropriated. Would you agree with that?
Um, parts and parts not. Um, what I told you is that I had read, the full statement is that I had read someplace that the Treasurer's Bill will be treated just like a Ways and Means Bill when we didn't appropriate it. I cannot find that, I have it someplace in my notes. I don't just tell you things that I believe to be false, okay? Um, in fact, the conversation that we're having right now, we had it either last year or the year before, about separate that out, that's what I also said to you, separate that language. We're not saying if you can and cannot do that language, we're just saying separate it out of appropriation bill. I didn't think unconstitutional, I thought charter, okay? Which is what I told you either last year or the year before. Um, so, um, I'm doing further, I have a whole file on the Treasurer's Office and whatever Alderman is having problems with the Treasurer, not just this current one, but the past one also. So, um, I'm going to search for, I won't just tell you anything, I'm gonna search, I have it someplace in my files, and then we'll be able to look at it more clearly. So that part, I, I'm not necessarily in agreement with the, with the, uh, City Council.
Okay, um, but it did have merit, uh, the discussion that you brought up. I'm, I'm looking for the Alderman from the 9th Ward. Okay, let me go back, if it's okay, can I inquire again from the Alderwoman of the first?
Continue.
Um, Alderwoman, you're a lawyer, and I get accused of practicing law without a license, it's just humor.
And I'm gonna report you to the bar.
It's just humor. Um, but I say that because you seem to be like me, a stickler for rules.
I am.
And, uh, I was wondering if you would be interested in working with me, based on your comments about it should be done separately, on crafting language in a bill that would encourage the treasurer to adhere to our current law of meeting monthly?
I will, if you will agree to meet with me and the treasurer, and you all sit down, I have tried this before, um, you are putting a lot of us in the middle of something that we don't want to be in the middle of, so if you, I will sit down with you, because I do believe that people have to, uh, that departments have to report to, uh, committees. I, and I've never told you I was opposed to that, okay? So I will sit with you, if you will sit with me and the treasurer and talk about, is there a way that we can work together?
Okay, you know, I find it interesting that you say that I am putting us in a tough situation, um, as if what I'm doing is not consistent with following the rules.
Well, when you added that other part, because last time you did take it out, so then you brought it back this time, that's what I'm talking about, adding that part that I thought was, uh, uh, not legal under our charter, I'm saying that, because one of the things, if you ever come to our, our rules meeting, we, people bring up different bills they don't like, and the committee members will tell you, I always say, we're not into if we like the bill or not, our charge is this, okay? So I felt uncomfortable with what we even had to do, but based on what we had in front of us, okay, so that's what I'm saying. I don't think all of anything is one or the other. I just wish you all would sit down, and if I could facilitate that in any way, and you, then you could say no, um, then we'll have to look at it a different way. I just say, I always exchange something, I will sit down with you, we would talk about crafting something, if you will sit down with the treasurer and see if there's some way to, um, work things out, that we don't have to keep going back. And, and it's not you, it used to be the Alderman from the 13th, Wessels, and the former treasurer, uh, uh, Williams, so I went through this with them.
Right. I just wanted to point out that I found it interesting that you chose me as somebody that was putting us in the middle of that, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, well then I'll take it back only to the language, okay?
Okay, all right, I just want to, uh, make clear, so the Alderman from the 9th Ward has left the chambers, I'm gonna assume, and the Alderman from the, uh, 24th, uh, 24th is not in the chambers. Mr. President, I'd like to inquire, i- is the Alderman from the 9th and the 24th in the chambers?
Uh, Alderman from the 9th, it doesn't appear so. Alderman from the, Alderman from the 24th?
Okay, uh, Alderman from the 24th, would you leave for, yield for questions, please? Yes, Mr. President?
Alderman from the 24th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 22nd?
Yeah.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Alderman, um, you're a lawyer, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so my assumption is that you believe in following our local laws and ensuring that we adhere to the letter of the law, whether it's our charter or local ordinances, would that be a fair assumption?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, so let me ask you this, would you be interested in working with me on legislation that would encourage the treasurer to have monthly meetings as prescribed by ordinance?
Uh, I, I'd be happy to, to talk to you about, uh, you know, the, the possibility of, of looking into it, I'm, I'm just walking in now, so I'm not sure, uh, the context that I'm walking into.
Well, the context is following local laws, charter and ordinances.
Then absolutely.
Okay, um, all right, thank you, Alderman. Well, I see the Alderman from the 9th is in the chambers, Mr. President, I'd like to inquire of Alderman from the 9th?
Alderman from the 9th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 22nd?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Um, Alderman, um, would you agree it's our responsibility to follow local laws and charter, um, prescriptions?
Uh, 100%.
Okay, would you think it's righteous if any elected official would willfully violate our local ordinances?
Are you...
Righteous, you think it's right for any elected official?
No.
Okay, so let me ask you this, would you be willing to work with me on legislations to ensure that or encourage the treasurer to have monthly meetings?
Uh, yes, I, I was reviewing this with our council back there. Yes, I, I was reviewing this with our council back there, and according to our council, the Julian Bush's legal standing here seems to be appropriate. So, yes.
Thank you. We're in a situation right now, thanks to the, thank you, Alderman. We're in a situation right now, thanks to the, the good debate that we had last Friday, to be placed in a quagmire. Now, the quagmire is this. So, this bill could go on the formal calendar, and then there's no budget bill for the Parking Commission, because it would have not gone through E and A. I can encourage my colleagues to expand the scope of the title whereby Section 11 of the bill would then fit, and that is the opinion of the City Councilor. I can remove, ask my colleagues to just do an amendment and remove Section 11 in its entirety, or I could try to convince my colleagues to pass it as is, knowing that it's flawed, and wait and see if we would be sued. Because as we talked about last Friday, oftentimes we pass legislation, whether it's the City of St. Louis or St. Louis County or wherever, and it's flawed, and it is law until the court rules otherwise. But I am going to take the high road on this, so that I don't keep us here for another hour or so. And I'm going to ask the clerk if the clerk would pass out an amendment that I want to offer on this bill. Okay. As, as the amendment is going around, some of you will be pleasantly pleased, that what I'm asking for is to simply remove Section 11. Out of all options, I am asking to remove Section 11 in its entirety, thereby taking away any concern that anybody has whether or not this board bill violates the city charter or our local ordinances. And I would hope that you see that as a gesture of good faith and a willingness to do the right thing. I certainly know that I can push the envelope, and when provoked, I can do some things that make people feel uncomfortable. But trust me, that is not what I choose to do very often. I think if the treasurer just has a willingness to follow the law and work with people, because this is an individual who ran an exceptional platform on accountability and transparency, and it's very difficult to have transparency when you lack having meetings, even if the meeting would last only five or 10 minutes. The point is, those who are on the Oversight Commission, which technically right now, based on the fact that a ruling stands that the parking statutes are unconstitutional, the only commissioners on the Parking Commission is the Chairman of Streets, Director of Streets, and the Treasurer, as it stands, until the Supreme Court rules otherwise. And everybody needs oversight. The mayor's office needs oversight, and there's certainly some of you down here who pursue that on a regular basis, and you should, because if it increases the quality of life for the constituents that we serve, that is our obligation. But also remember, we took an oath to obey not only the Constitution of the United States, but also our local ordinances and our charter. Mr. President, I would like to ask if there's anyone who do not have a copy of the amendment?
Does everyone have a copy of the amendment, Amendment Number One, on their desk? Please proceed, Alderman.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I would like to introduce Amendment Number One to Board Bill 50 floor substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the first and the eighth.
Yes, Mr. President, Members of the Board, as I stated before, Amendment Number One strikes the entire Section 11 and creating a new Section 11, which was the old Section 12. And I'd like to move for adoption of Amendment Number One for Board Bill 50 floor substitute.
It's been moved, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Amendment Number One, or Board Bill 50 floor substitute. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Now, what's before us is Board Bill, Board Bill 50 floor substitute as amended.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for perfection of Board Bill 50 floor substitute as amended.
It's been, it's, it's been moved already. Just any further discussion? Any further discussion on?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just want to thank the Alderman from the twenty-second for the good faith gesture. Very sincerely appreciate that, and, and for your due diligence in seeking the City Council's opinion on this. And I, I do, everyone has a copy of the City Council's opinion on their desks regarding this bill, and I thank you for everyone who's taken the time to read through that. I do disagree with the City Councilor in his assessment of the situation, as if these two sections of the Missouri revised statutes are unconstitutional, because currently the appeal is pending before the State Supreme Court, and his own City Councilor testified in front of the Supreme Court saying that we were operating under state law. So, in the event that we were to not pass this budget bill today, we are still under the state statutes and not under the assumption that those two statutes have been ruled unconstitutional because of the pending litigation. I get that it's a bit, a bit convoluted. Things get, get wonky when we get this far into litigation, but I, I, I thank everyone for their due diligence on this, and especially in, in, in the amendment offered, in support of the amendment offered, that we are passing a clean appropriations bill and can work towards other legislation as necessary. So, I rise in support of Board Bill 50 floor substitute as amended?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I also rise to thank the Alderman from the twenty-second for the due diligence and asking for the legal opinion, okay? He asks for more than one, as I understand. And when you start asking one lawyer, you get a lot of legal opinions, okay? But he did do that. We ought to do that more often. So, I commend him for that. I commend him for taking 11 out. I also sent a letter back. I don't know if you saw that. I CC'd you, because I have, besides what the Alderman from the eighth said about the, if the, the two sections of the Missouri state statute are unconstitutional. So, I'm waiting to see what the Supreme Court says. Is it stayed or not? Because if it's not stayed, it does not need to go to E and A, okay? Sometimes when, they're automatic stays, and sometimes they're not, and I'm not familiar with the procedure enough to know which it is, but I am seeking information about that. And when we get that information, that'll further guide us about what we need to do, and I'm hoping to have it early next week. This bill has to go back to the Rules Committee now, to be engrossed.
Yes.
And I again want to thank the sponsor, and I am happily going to vote for his floor, is it a floor substitute?
As amended.
As amended, okay. I will be hap, I will be happy to vote for it. And again, I want him to know, I do believe in oversight. I do not have a problem with him wanting to have oversight, okay? I do want to caution that oversight, so I've been married for a lot of years, over 30 years, oversight can get to be too, too stringent. So, I can sweep the floor with the best of them, but if you get in there and start telling me which way to do my strokes, you're going to get in trouble. So, we can do oversight and just be cautious about that, because nobody likes for you to be over them all the time. But the, I think the Alderman from the twenty-second did a fabulous job, and I appreciate him, and I commend him, and I will be supporting this bill.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank the Alderman from the twenty-second for his good faith gesture and assuaging our concerns. I think that a, a lot of us that, that voted no last week were not opposed to what you're trying to do. We just didn't feel like this was the correct vehicle to do it, that, that we needed to make sure that we had a clean bill, and so I will absolutely be supporting this bill. And we, I, I believe that we need more actions like this at the board. He, he listened to his colleagues, their concerns, and got, you know, went to the experts, figured out the best way forward, and, and, you know, now we're going to be able to come together and get something done where we were, you know, in, in two different camps before. So, again, I'd like to thank you, and I look forward to voting aye on this. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second, recognize close.
Yes, Mr. President. There's any consolation to the Alderman of the first and the Alderman of the eighth, I also, as a guy that practiced law without a license, disagree with some of the opinion. And with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth, that we perfect Board Bill 50 floor substitute as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
That is the extent of board bills for our perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 5, 6, 7, 10, 12, Committee Sub, 49, 51, and 21.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar?
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquaro, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Cone, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Martin, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Cone. Twenty-three ayes votes.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the twenty-second and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill Two, sponsored by Alderman Koltar and President Reed, and the following Alderman persons: Bosley, Hubbard, Murphy, Howard, Davis, Spencer, Vaquaro, Cone, Clark Hubbard, Pam Boyd, Navarro, Rice, Gunther, Oldenburg, and Ingracia. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission pertaining to the zoning code, Title 26, amended Chapter 26, 08 of the Revised Code, by adding a cross-reference in the definition section for marijuana-related uses, adding a new chapter to the zoning code, Title 26, pertaining to the regulation of medical marijuana facilities, and including sections on the purpose, definitions, use regulations, and site requirement for medical marijuana facilities, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill Number Two.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move to third read and final pass, Board Bill Number Two.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, entertain a second. Seconded by Alderman from the twelfth and, and the ninth. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed last week, Board Bill Two relates to zoning changes to bring us into compliance with Amendment Two to the Missouri Constitution passed last fall pertaining to medical marijuana cultivation, manufacturing, and sales in the state of Missouri. This board bill will help, my hope is, help drive investment in the city by making it clear in our zoning code where cultivation, manufacturing, and dispensary facilities can operate. It'll also provide access for patients who, who are in need of these, these treatments, and who, who voted overwhelmingly to make medical marijuana legal in the state of Missouri last fall. So, I appreciate the discussion we had last week and the support of my colleagues. I know our colleague from the, from the twelfth here, Alderman Ornowitz, also want to be added as a co-sponsor if we could, and with that, I'll renew my motion if there's no questions.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. Will my colleague from the seventh yield for a question?
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield a question? Alderman from the twenty-second?
Yes.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. This is just a trivia question. Is there any data that talks about, once a state passes legislation like this, the spike in marijuana, medical marijuana cards, ID cards?
I, I couldn't tell you, I couldn't give you exact numbers from other states, but based on the analysis that the trade association's done, they believe roughly two to two and a half percent of the population of Missouri will actually apply and get these medical marijuana cards.
It's kind of interesting. I was driving down Martin Luther King at Jefferson, and there's this sign on the street sign, and it says, it's 1-800, call me for your medical marijuana card or something like that. So, this is, already there, there are doctors that are advertising, if you need a marijuana card, so you can grow your own marijuana and have a good time, be recreational and everything that comes along with it, and be high every day, then that's, that's an option. That's probably going to be really booming in our, in our city and our state. What do you think?
Well, I, I mean, I think the, the primary intent here is, is for folks who are looking to use marijuana as an alternative form of treatment for whatever illness they may suffer from. Are there going to be people that exploit this system, perhaps? But, but ultimately, we've seen, I mean, we're the 33rd state to try something like this, and it's worked out all right in the states that have preceded us.
Right. And, and I don't think it's part of the legislation, but I would be interested in seeing if we could track that, you know, later on, once this thing really gets off the ground, you know, how many marijuana, medical marijuana ID cards have been issued to people, you know, just to kind of get a feel for where we're going.
And I suspect that will, I mean, I know that will be tracked. And, and, you know, the Department of Health and Senior Services at the state level has already, you know, they're tracking application. There was a pre-filing period for facility licenses. They've tracked those and published numbers related to that. I suspect they'll publish numbers relating to number of applicants seeking a card and, and the number issued by the states. Obviously, there's patient confidentiality issues with the names, but I suspect we will definitely see numbers relating to those things.
Yeah. Although I personally don't support the use of marijuana, I'll vote for the bill, because it's within the scope of the law. But I, I, I do honestly, personally have reservations about where we're going, where we're headed, you know, as a state with this marijuana legalization. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the eighteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Honorable Board of Alderpeople. Mr. Alderman from the seventh ward, will you yield a question?
Yes.
My question is, is there...
Hold, hold, hold on one second. You know, you know. Alderman from the eighteenth?
Mr. President?
Will the...
Will, will the Alderman from the seventh ward yield a question?
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield for question?
Yes, Mr. President.
Alderman from the eighteenth, please proceed.
Mr. Alderman from the seventh, is there provision in there for minority inclusion?
So, the state law does contain, so, under what we're allowed and authorized to regulate as, at a local level, we really have no say in that, but the state law and the regulations do provide incentives for applicants who are opening or applying for facility licenses in areas of high unemployment. And, and within that, there's a number of, it's by zip code. There's a number of zip codes within the city boundaries, and I apologize, I don't have that list in front of me, where you get extra points in your application for locating in high unemployment areas.
Please state your point of order, Alderman from... Alderman from, Alderman from the fourth would like you to specify whether you meant African-Americans or Africans, or Asian. Alderman, Alderman from the seventh, the Alderman from the fourth would like to have you, you know, specify if it was just a mistake when you said Africans, or did you meant African-Americans or Africans?
Me? I'm sorry, I meant African-Americans. I, I, yeah, apologies.
All right, thank you. Thank you, all. Any, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the clo- Alderman from the 7th, you recognize the close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, second about Alderman from the 12th, that we, third read and final pass Board Bill number two. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Koltar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Volmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaquero, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Martin, Alderman Green, Alderman Todd, Alderman Mohammed. Twenty aye votes, one no vote, and one present.
By vote, stay in the motion. Alderman from the 7th and third read and finally pass Board Bill number two.
That is the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 5, 6, 7, 10, 49, 51, 2, 12, Committee Sub, and that's the extent of it.
All other business being suspended, the president shall, in open session, affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt our courtesy resolution.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, second about Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution 73, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, President Reed, and Alderman Ingracia. The Board of Aldermen supports early voting and same-day registration and supports its implementation in the city so that citizens of the city have the opportunity to enjoy the benefits of early voting and same-day registration as soon as possible.
Alderman from the 26th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 73.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to assign Resolution 73 to the Legislation Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 26th, second about Alderman from the 22nd, that we send Resolution 73 to legislation. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 74, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Ornowitz, City of St. Louis Senior Citizens Services Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2019 through 2020.
Alderman from the 12th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 74.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to refresh everyone's money, this was an election memory. Where's mine? I'm thinking of getting paid. Anyway, this is the Senior Service Fund that was put on the ballot and voted on in November of 2016, the past, that added.
Alderman from the 12th, could you, please state your point of order.
The Alderman from the 12th making a motion to do something with this?
Yeah, on resolutions, there, you do not have to have a motion to begin discussion, so he's still in order.
Okay, so we're going to have discussion, and then it could go to committee?
He can ask for unanimous consent and all that stuff after discussion. Please proceed, Alderman from the 12th.
So anyway, this was the 5% property tax for the purpose of creating the senior fund. And as it states in here, the state statute requires approval of a senior fund budgeted by the governor and body of the city. So the board has to submit the following budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and ending June 30th, 2020, for consideration which needs to be approved by this board here. So just a quick summary on here, on the fund, the income and expense budget. The estimated income for 2019 is $1,900,000 and $24,000 in interest, which will bring it to $1,924,000. There's also agency grants tied to that of $1,600 and other fees, but, you know, we need to pass this at the board, so I would ask for consideration that this board pass this resolution.
So would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I would like to request unanimous consent.
No objection. Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 12th would yield?
Alderman from the 12th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 1st?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess I thought you were going to send this to committee so we could kind of look at the budget. Is there a reason why we couldn't send it to committee for health and human welfare so that we could kind of look at it and take it apart for a minute?
Uh, yes, and we still got time to pass it. I mean, I have no problem with sending it to the Health and Human Services Committee.
Okay.
I request that you do that, just so we can have a little discussion about it, since really, we just kind of got to look at it, okay? If you don't mind.
No problem.
Just withdraw the unanimous consent request and then make a motion. Please hold it.
Mr. President, I request that we send this bill to the Health and Human Services Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 12th, that we send Resolution Number 74 to Health and Human Services, entertain a second, second about Alderman from the 14th. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 78, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, 401 South 18th Street LLC in the City of St. Louis Enhanced Enterprise Zone.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution Number 78.
Again, thank you, Mr. President, to members of the board. At the request of the Alderman from the 6th, I request that Resolution 78 be referred to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, second about Alderman from the 22nd, that we send Resolution Number 78 to HUDs. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
And under miscellaneous unfinished business, I understand there was a bill that needs to be enrolled. Please, please proceed.
Report of Enrollment Committee, Board Bill 5, 6, 7, 10, 49, 51, 2, 12, Committee Sub, and 21.
All other business being suspended, the president shall, in open session, affix his signature heretofu to the end that these may become law. Other miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, June 25th, Rules and Engrossment will have a committee meeting, committee hearing at 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room discussing Board Bill 62 and 1 as amended. Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, HUDs will have a committee meeting, committee hearing at 9:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room discussing Board Bills 48, 58, 59, and 59. Ways and Means will have a meeting on Wednesday, June 26th, 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room. And they will be discussing Board Bill 68. Thursday, June 27th, Transportation and Commerce will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room discussing Board Bills 19, 56, and 57. Friday, June 28th, 2019, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcement.
Alderman from the 1st.
President, members of the board, I would like to, for this one time only at this point, change Rules and Engrossment from 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, June 25th, because it's a conflict, to Wednesday at 11:00, right after Ways and Means.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to call a meeting for Health and Human Services on Wednesday at 1:00.
Madam Clerk.
In the Leisure Room.
Please make note of that. Health and Human Services, Wednesday at 1:00.
So noted.
Alderman from the 20th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to call a meeting of the Education and Youth Matters Committee on July 1st at 6:00 p.m.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Also, we have a meeting Thursday, June 27th, Public Employee Meetings at 10:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room.
Alderman from the 23rd, we didn't see you. One of those air horn things, let you know I'm standing here. Or a big flag or something. So I'm going to, well, we were talking Wednesday for a public safety meeting at 1:00. Given all the Wednesdays at 1:00 now, we'll go for 2:00 Wednesday, public safety meeting. We're going to discuss Board Bill Number 81, that's Alderman Bosley's bill, and if anyone else has something they want to bring up, we're going to have a meeting Wednesday at 2:00. All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, I apologize. Is it too late for me to make a quick announcement?
No, no.
Okay. I just wanted to throw out here, just so the members of the Board of Aldermen are not caught off guard, and for individuals who may want to be added into the conversation. As you know, we got a lot of violence going on in the city. We have a lot of children being killed. We have to put a cap on these things, whether you agree with the choice that, you know, I've made and I feel like needs to be done and implemented or not. You know, it's important for you to understand where I'm coming from, and more importantly, have the opportunity to be involved in that particular conversation and have your voice heard at the same time. Today, I will be sending you all a letter, along with every member of the press in the city, that is making an official call, an official call, to the governor of the state for reinforcements in the city of St. Louis for protection in this city. Whether it is the National Guard, the state troopers, or the state police, we need help at this particular point. We cannot continue to have the public being told that we don't have the numbers, as a city, to adequately answer the calls when the general public calls for help. We have people being murdered and not being responded to after 20 minutes after 100 shots are being shot off. So with that being said, I just want to let everybody know in your inbox today that we'll be a letter. I will be sending it to the governor, I will be sending it to every Board of Aldermen member, and there will be a letter out to the public, the general public, soon, for your constituents and any residents in the city who sees fit for individuals to come into this city and help recreate law and order. We cannot continue to have a 50% to 60% chance of getting away with homicide in this city. Once again, you may disagree with me. This job isn't about being agreeable nor being likable. I know I will get plenty of scrutiny for it, but I'm prepared to take that risk and do what's necessary so we can have some real resolve within this city over the summertime. If you have not picked up a dead body off the ground this summer, if you have not talked to one of these children or one of the mothers of these children who've been shot in the face, we buried a few kids last week. We have to do something about this, and we cannot continue to wait for any plan that we're working on implementing right now. Yes, we just allocated half a million dollars to the Cure Violence Initiative, or the initiative, I apologize. But as we wait for that to be implemented, how many of those individuals that are living under these conditions will be murdered? How many people have to see their loved ones gunned down in the street? How many of us are going to continue to look at the news and see we had 12 shot, 3 killed? Nobody's going to want to move to this city and we'll continue to have a dwindling population if we don't get a hold to the narrative. The news is not interested in talking about only the positive things that exist within this city. How many times have you seen in this Board of Aldermen, we get up and we express how many amazing things we have going on in our respective wards, it being pushed on the news? We never hear 10 stories about what you can go and do on a Friday or a Saturday night. We don't. We hear a few. And we all have things going on in our ward regularly to where the public and the general public, these kids can get into that keeps them and will keep them out of trouble, that their parents can take them to, so we can be a city where people have other things to do than get out here, sell drugs, and shoot at each other. But in the time that we work on getting our city under control, we need to have a cap on the things that exist within this city and the homicides that are taking place. So once again, you don't have to agree with me, and I'm not expecting everybody to. Once again, this job isn't about being liked. My goal is to be effective and in any way possible. So once again, I will be sending you all a letter, an official letter today, that I will be sending to the governor. The first time that I spoke about this, there was no letter, there was no conversation between me and the state. I just wanted to throw the idea out there and let the general public have their say-so. And as time has went on, we've had more homicides than existed when I first initiated the call. When that call was talked about in the first place, we had less than, not less than, we had, it's been over 30 homicides since that date. And since then, we've had over seven children killed that are under the age of 15 years old. Once again, over seven homicides in this city of children who are under the age of 15 years old. That's pathetic. What it says in this city is, you cannot grow up in a What it says in this city is you cannot grow up in a conducive environment, let your kids go outside to the park without getting shot. You can't drive around this city and go from point A to point B without worrying about whether or whether or not a bullet is going to come through your window that was never meant for you. This is not the St. Louis that we want the world to see. But it's most certainly the narrative that the news and every other media source perpetuating, pushing, and we have to get in front of it. It is time for us to get uncomfortable to get comfortable. If we fail now, 10 years from now, you'll have way more children being shot now because the people that are shooting these kids are under the age of 21. We got 15-year-olds running around with assault rifles and pistols in our neighborhoods. That's pathetic. 14, 15, 16, 17 years old, they should not have guns available to them. And we should be doing everything possible to ensure that they think, they think twice before they pick up one. I'm not saying that the National Guard or the state troopers or anybody else are going to come in and completely change the narrative, but the narrative we have right now of not having enough to do enough, that's pathetic for our city and it breeds no change. It actually incentivizes murder. It actually tells murderers, victims of homicide and people pushing homicide, that you can get away with murder and when you get shot in this city and your loved one is murdered, there's a 50 or 60% chance that murderer will be caught. We had all those children hit last week or week before last, and we have not heard one news story being pushed around the entire city on us catching those individuals who did that crime. That's how we deter murderers. We let them know that we won't tolerate it and when we catch you, we will shame you. The jails need to step up also. Those individuals in jail right now who have a life sentence need to step up and break the legs and arms of those individuals who are killing our kids. There has to be a call for justice. Once again, you may disagree with me, but things have to change or they will get worse. If you are not listening to what's going on in this city because it's not happening in your neighborhood, you are doing a disservice to this city by not being a part of the solution. And that's not to say that if you're not on board with me that you are not a part of the solution. We all have different perspectives on what needs to be happening. If you feel like services need to be implemented to change these things, then work what you need to do to, 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 to create those services and push that agenda. Whatever it is that you feel like needs to be done in your respective areas and in other areas to help rid ourselves of what plagues this city, which is an identity that we are number one and have been number one in murder per capita for the last five to 10 years. Once again, we are doing a disservice. So I will be sending a letter to you all. If you want to sign on to it, I would appreciate it. If not, then, you know, there's, there's no love lost. But we have to step out and be bold in this city. We have to not be afraid of public scrutiny. Yes, there will be public push-off on this. We had the public pissed off about an individual who killed somebody in another state just two weeks ago, ran from the police, shot at the police, then got shot by the police and the public. We had public outcry. Now, once again, I'm ready to take any scrutiny that comes with it. Yes, I'm going to have people pissed off at me for making these statements. Absolutely. But the family of those individuals who need retribution, who need justice served, will not be mad. A lot of people don't understand what the police are going through, how they are scrutinized. How can we be mad at officers for doing what they need to do to protect the public? We can't have murderers out here on the loose and then protect them when we catch them. It is time for change in this city and we have to stand up. We have to step up to the plate and get uncomfortable. If we want to be comfortable in the next one or two years, then we have to be uncomfortable right now through that transitional period. And regardless of what that takes, it's not going to be the Cure Violence Plan immediately because we need time to implement that. And as we implement that, a year from now or two years from now, we can statistically look and say what it has done. But in the meantime, how many of our children are going to be gunned down while we wait? How many news stories are we going to wait for to go out to the rest of the United States for us to realize that we are not getting tourism here because you can't come here and not worry about not getting shot? You can't come here and not think about your family's safety. We can do everything we want to do to build this city up, but if the narrative across the entire United States is you can't poke your head up unless you downtown without it getting blown off, then we all will lose. The same individuals that are shooting in my neighborhood, I promise you, they are coming to yours. The Central West End is no longer safe. Understand that. The South Side, where you reside, is no longer safe. Those North Side neighborhoods that have built themselves up to a particular point to where they no longer have to deal with those type of issues are no longer safe. No one is safe in this city. It is our job to ensure public health and safety. And sometimes you have to take the scrutiny that comes with being hard on the residents of this city so you can push the agenda that we will not tolerate it. And we have to get to that particular point where things are just untolerable. Murder is not tolerated in this city. We understand all of the things that have happened to perpetuate this type of violence. We can't continue to talk about the man and I'm not going to sit up here and continue to talk about the white man while my residents say they are holding us back and other residents in the city, they say they are holding us back. It's not about the white man, the Arab man, the Chinese man, and no other man. I'm talking about my people, the individuals that I see, the individuals that I go to and pick up off the ground and listen to the mothers cry and say, that's my son. He was shot by his friend, his cousin, or an individual over drugs or whatever it may be. People have to know when you shoot in this city, we will pursue you. We will find you. We will catch you and we will do whatever's necessary to impose justice on you. We have to make sure that when they get to where that point in justice is served, that they let everybody else know under them, this ain't no place to be. You don't want to be where I am. It is time for us to take our city back and that's under any, any cause. We need to exercise any way that we can do that because I swear to God, if you don't do it now, these children will get worse. There's lawlessness going on in this city and nobody understands realistically what it takes to get us back to a particular point where people think before they act. These kids are not thinking, they're shooting first, thinking later. The games play a part in this. We didn't grow up when you can go run around and kill people on games just for the hell of it. We didn't grow, we didn't grow up with the music telling you, we're going to shoot up the entire block. I don't care who's standing outside to hit one person. We let those narratives on the movies, the games, and the music be played out in this city and we go along our each and every day-to-day routes hoping that those bullets don't come through our windows, acting like bullets got a name on them. They do not. We're at a point right now where we have the loosest gun laws in the entire United States. I want you to understand something. Before those laws came, the same amount of people that were getting shot then are getting shot now. There is no influx or deflux. It's not about the gun laws. It's the mentality, people. People have to understand when you come to our city, you will come correct. When you grow up in this city, you will grow up correct or you will be held accountable for your actions. We have shootings on Goodfellow, Natural Bridge, Grand, every single state street you can think of. People shoot in the neighborhood and they hop on those state streets and they drive the hell out and they get away with it. So much to where they come back to the murder scenes and pick up their damn bullets. Pick up the bullets they just murdered somebody with before the police ever get there. Now, we can easily point the finger at the police, but we listen to them say it's not enough of us because they were just on another homicide call. It's not about them. It's not just about the general public and the community. It's about the authorities that exist in this city and what we are willing to do to ensure, to ensure that at all costs, the residents of this city feel like they are safe, will be safe. Victims do not come and talk about who shot them because they know somebody going to be at their front door tonight if they find out that they willing to tell. We have people getting murdered just for telling on individuals who just did a murder. Ain't nobody going to come and tell the police that it was him when he's still out riding around on ATVs with that big ass gun on his side. Excuse my language, but this is serious. Nobody. We have to get uncomfortable to get comfortable. Yes, this will come with scrutiny, just like anything that happens in this city right now. When we pull, when we get pulled over by the police, we got everybody and their mama yelling harassment. To hell with that. I'm not encouraging harassment, but I'm most certainly encouraging you getting these guns off the street and individuals who should not have them and people who are out here doing what they should not be doing. We do everything we can to lock them up and keep them there. It is up to us to change the face of this city. It's 28 of us. We got one mayor, one, one public safety director, one, one chief, one. 28 legislators and a president. What are we willing to do to come together once again and show this city that we are not afraid like the residents are? They have been held down, held back, and we have not stepped up to the plate. And it's no disrespect to anybody in this room in your own respective way of what you've tried to do to ensure your residents have protection, but the residents do not feel protected. The police do not feel protected. You know what it feels like, what it feels like to be running through a gangway at 2:00 in the morning with an officer behind you that you don't trust? None of us know what that feels like. We have to take back this city. We have to hold officers accountable. We have to hold the general public accountable. Everybody has to be accountable for their actions and to do that right now, it's going to take some uncomfortability. So with that, once again, you all were receiving the letter today. We all know the police can't do it by themselves because they've told us flat out, I'm on 100 calls. I got all of this going on every day. How long are we going to let them continue to tell us that they don't have the numbers? How long are we willing to sit by and watch people get murdered in the street and have them send us letters, have them call our phones? And I know you all done got calls. What we going to do about the homicide? What we going to do about the violence that pledged this city? What we going to do about the carjackings? I promise you, those individuals that ain't shooting you up right now while they take your car, if they don't get caught, while they got that gun in their hand, the next time when somebody fights them off, somebody will get shot because it does nothing but It is up to us to ensure the public safety and it's about that time when we step up to the plate and do what's necessary. Let's get uncomfortable to be uncomfortable, people.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I want to, uh, first, before we, before we proceed, I really truly owe each and every one of you all a big thank you and especially the ones that truly understand what just happened. Um, you know, we cannot go into an in-depth discussion like that on a single subject matter under announcements. And just by the, and I'm telling you, this is for you, Alderman from the third, just by the mere fact that not one of your colleagues stood up and called a point of order because we were way, we were way out of order on that, um, that says something. That says that it is important, it is important to everybody here and they, and they were listening. Uh, so, uh, I want to thank each and every one of you for that and allowing that to proceed. Uh, and also with the understanding that, we all understand that that is not what we do during announcements. And thank you for the message. Let's give them a big round of applause and thank them for the message. Alderman from the third. I mean, I've been doing that all day. Alderman from the fourth. Yeah, it's announcement, it's announcement, it's announcement. Yeah, we're on announcement. So if you have an announcement, yeah, if you have an announcement. Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, you can also ask for a point of personal privilege if the president grants that.
Yeah, yes. Any further, any further announcements? Any further? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to call a Streets Refuge and Traffic Meeting for Tuesday at 9:00 a.m.
All right.
If it's available.
Madam Clerk? Please repeat it for the clerk.
9:00 a.m. on Tuesday? It's 10 is the only thing that's available, uh, but I have a 10. How about 1:00 p.m. Tuesday?
And if that doesn't work, just get with the clerk.
Okay.
Get with the clerk directly. Any, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 26th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to invite all of you all to the 26th War, whether we are Family Free Outdoor, Ivory Perry Park Concert Series. They are the next four months, the last Sunday of the month, but, um, this Sunday, the 23rd, we will have Tracer featuring P. Ty Williams and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 at Ivory Perry Park and I would love to see you all there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from 22nd?
I have no further announcements. Are we on excuse?
You recognize on the motion to excuse?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to exclude, excuse the Alderman from the 2nd, 5th, 6th, 11th, and 15th due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, I entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 8th. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Been adopted. Alderman from, Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I move to adjourn to next Friday, June 28th at 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from 22nd, I entertain the second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 9th and the 1st. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.